Hanson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Here.
Opening, open meeting compliance statement.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December fifteenth of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least twenty-four hours prior to this meeting, including Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the office of the superintendent.
I am the committee consent agenda. All the following items listed below, which concern reports and items of a routine nature, normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of discussion, consideration, and approval of the following addition of new items, of items of new business to the agenda. Minutes of January tenth, two thousand twenty-two, regular meeting, approval of the finance report, approval of the activity fund report, approval of the activity fund fundraisers, approval of the activity fund interaccount transfers, approval of the child nutrition report, and clearing items of surplus.
Okay, so we'll go back to agenda item two point two, our minutes from the January tenth, two thousand twenty-two. We did not see an error to those minutes. Agenda item three point three, the bottom attachment is the January twenty-two investments that are current. The top attachment is the financial report presented monthly. If you'll open that top attachment, you can see that all of our collections in comparison to FY twenty-one have increased. And we'll bring next month to you how much we collected of our estimated needs. But our budget and our revenue is really positive at this point in the year, especially when you consider where we were a year ago. So it's much improved. You look at the next page, the next two pages of the attachment, that is just a comparison of our revenue and expense. You can see in comparison, our revenue is up and our expenses are really pretty similar to what they were last year up to this point. And then I provided that for you on the third page and a chart. So we have revenue of increase of over a million dollars as compared to FY twenty-one, and we've spent about fifty thousand in it. So all in all, very positive outlook with our financials. Our activity fund report, agenda item three point four, all activity funds are in good standing. Really want to appreciate the work that Mrs. Durkey has done. Mrs. Durkey also does a lot with our child nutrition, taking on that extra role of child nutrition and our activity accounts. She's done an outstanding job as we've gotten busier and busier and returned more to normal. So all of those activity funds are in good standing. Three point six, interaccount transfer, or excuse me, back up to three point five, we do not have any fundraisers for this month. Three point six, interaccount transfer, we have two. These both relate to our photography for our yearbook, and those are transfers from Strawbridge to Lincoln Elementary and Washington for picture purchases.
Has any of you had your pictures taken? It turned out pretty good, didn't it?
I haven't seen them.
My kid, he himself can tell you.
Oh, I went in the wardroom and had mine done.
I haven't seen them, so I don't know why.
They were good.
They were good.
Did a really good job.
I thought they did a really good job. Considering what they had to work with.
Right.
Well, and then I followed her, so we're lucky we didn't break the cameras or cut down the page.
Agenda item three point seven, our child nutrition report, just a comparison from year to year, month to month. You can see that we continue to serve more students. Want to commend all of our student service staff, all of our secretaries that done an outstanding job, really quality food. I mentioned a month ago that we would be meeting with some students here at the high school to look at some renovation of the cafeteria and make that a little bit more of an inviting space. And so we're going to have our first meeting next week, about five or six students that already got some good ideas, and so we think that would be a good thing for Alba High School. And then agenda item three point eight, there are no items of surplus. Are there any questions with the consent agenda? There are none, I would recommend it to you.
Make the motion we approve this.
Second. Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Item number four, vote to approve purchase order number differences for the following funds for fiscal year twenty-two. It's referenced in four point one, general fund, four point two, building fund, four point three, child nutrition fund, and four point four, gift fund.
Okay, we'll start with our general fund, agenda item four point one, some expenses. If you'll open up that top attachment, draw your attention to purchase order number four oh seven. That is a purchase of Amazon, from Amazon for STEM materials. This will be for our aeronautics class. It's reimbursed. Purchase order number four oh eight for eight thousand two hundred ninety. Again, this is more STEM materials for our aeronautics class. Purchase order number four twelve, Bank of America, that's a purchase order for fuel expenses on our fourteen passenger bus. Purchase order number four sixteen, forty-three thousand eight hundred. That is the renovation portion for our contract Triarc. Purchase order number four seventeen, Arc Supplies for one thousand four hundred and twenty. Purchase orders number four twenty-three, four twenty-four, and four thirty-two. Four twenty-three, three thousand six hundred eighty-four fifty. That is football helmet reconditioning and, or excuse me, that is shoulder pad and football pants replacement. And then purchase order number four twenty-four, five thousand eight hundred thirty-five is football helmet reconditioning. And then purchase order number four thirty-two, six replacement shoulder pads for our middle school. Purchase order number four thirty, the Willie Spears experience, really excited about that. We had Willie Spears book to come and speak to Lincoln and middle school, and then going to spend the majority of the day here at the high school. It would have been Thursday, and the weather didn't allow us to do that, so Willie's going to come back on February twenty-third and spend the day in the district talking to not only student bodies, but then various student groups throughout the day. So it's going to be a really good day on February twenty-third. Before that.
Yeah, or twenty-four, this is twenty-four.
It's the twenty-third, should not be the twenty-four, it should be the twenty-third. Right?
Right.
I think, yes, I know it is. And we, he changed it again, and we had to revise the date again, so I believe we've updated that everywhere.
Before you move away from that, is he doing a presentation in the auditorium at eleven again?
Yes.
Are we all compared to ten?
Yes, it'll be the same schedule, Ms. Kane. He's going to start at Lincoln Elementary, going to speak to, I believe, fifth graders at Lincoln. He will move to the middle school around nine o'clock and speak to the middle school students at nine. He'll come up here at eleven o'clock and speak to the entire student body at eleven. Twelve-thirty, we will have pizza with student council, and he's going to work with student council over lunch. And then I believe two o'clock will be all student athletes in the indoor, he will meet with them. And there may be a double in there, but we'll get that schedule out as we get closer.
That's okay.
Certainly invite people to come up to the auditorium and we'll welcome them.
Thank you.
Okay, the second attachment for four point one is the general fund payroll, and you can see we have a couple of substitute and then also higher that we will bring in for later. Agenda item four point two, our building fund, some open purchase orders there, Northwest Electric for repairs for twenty-five thousand. Purchase order number forty-one, Victory Tracks, that is to restripe and repair our track at twelve thousand six hundred twenty. And then Rose Plumbing is an open purchase order for plumbing repairs. Agenda item number three point three, child nutrition fund. Purchase order number nineteen, one thousand five hundred, Bushman Air, that's to fix the freezer at Longfellow. And then purchase order number twenty was to purchase the shelving here at the high school. Agenda item four point four, our gift fund. These are students that have transferred after the fall semester, and this is to reimburse those universities. See four students at those different universities. Are there any questions with agenda item four point one, four point two, four point three, or four point four?
Building fund, Victory Track, what all will they be doing with that track?
So they're going to restripe the track, mark it where you can see placement hurdles, exchange zones, and all the lanes. And then on the east side of the track, it looks like something was drove on that, it's taken up a little portion of the track, and they'll go in and repair that portion of the track. Before they come and do that, we're going to go on the east side of that retaining wall, and we're going to move some of that dirt with our skid steer and put it further up on the hill and work with our county commissioner to put some rock up there to try to hold back the erosion for tracks.
Will there be any of the uneven spots, do they level anything of that nature?
They will, I don't believe they're going to be able to level all of those places there. The main thing Coach Foster felt like was important is that from a striping point of view and practicing, that was the most critical part, especially the placement hurdles and those sorts of things. So I think that's the focus for that repair part of it right now. Any other questions? If there are none, I would recommend approval for agenda items four point one.
I'll make the motion that we approve the items four point one through four point four.
Second. Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Item number five, super agenda report.
Okay, we'll start with agenda item five point one, resignations, retirements, reassignments. We have a retirement from Cody Hooper as our middle school history teacher, softball and basketball coach. So appreciate many years Coach Hooper spent with us as a middle school coach, many years as a collegiate coach and high school coach, so wish him the best in his retirement. Agenda item five point two, communication. Just want to mention to you that today began the first day of the legislative session, or rather, sort of four thousand bills that he'll be considering, many of them pertaining to education. And so next month and thereafter, we'll provide updates on where bills are and what bills that we need to be aware of as a district. Might mention that I visited with Triarc, our architectural firmist, last week on our progress with the HVAC and the gym. Would hope that we can bring you a proposal in March. Some engineering is still taking place, but we hope to be able to bring that to you in March. Agenda item five point three, our strategic plan. I want to, first of all, thank the administrative team last week or last month. On our presentation, we asked you all to come back with any questions that you might have with regard to test scores and improvements that need to be made there. Before I turn it over to you all for questions, I want to draw your attention to our scorecard that be used with our strategic plan. As we continue to update our progress on a monthly basis, feel like it's important to provide you this update that really our stakeholders create. And so I want to honor that commitment that they made, setting these standards and these benchmarks and work towards meeting those. And so what we're going to try to do over the next week or two is to continue to update this and then get this posted on our website on the accountability tab, but I'll walk you through that. Each section of our strategic plan had a goal area and then provided really a timeline. And as we all know, our timeline has been difficult to hold true as a result of COVID, but it doesn't mean we've stopped working and trying to meet the performance measures set forth by those committees. And so what we're going to do is go in and make some check marks to note where we are, where we're progressing, but then more importantly, we want to draw your attention to our performance measures. And so to give you an idea, we had a curriculum and instruction committee that met, believe Mr. Bealy and Mrs. Lovelace were part of that committee with stakeholders three years ago, and they looked at test data and informed a baseline or created a baseline from the test data that we had, and you can see it's seventy-eight percent. And so what we're going to do is after we receive our test scores each spring, we'll come in and we'll update. The top number is what our benchmark was to be, it's the goal that we set for ourselves, and our bottom number is where we're at. And so we started at a seventy-eight percent benchmark or baseline. In nineteen twenty, we were seventy-nine percent was our goal, and in twenty twenty-one, eighty percent. We know in nineteen twenty, we had COVID, there was no state assessment, so we had no measurement. If you look at twenty twenty-one, we are at fifty percent, and that looks at students that will score proficient on the Oakland School Testing Program. So we know we've got work to do, and we've got plans that need to be made. And so you can go down through this and you can look at these benchmarks, and like I said, we want to make sure that we get this uploaded and that we use this scorecard to track our performance and how we're doing. So with that, if you have any questions for any of our administrators or myself, we would welcome any of those.
My biggest question is what are we doing to make a little difference? And I know there's, the things listed here, there's a lot of categories for us to work on, what are we doing for those categories to be, to get to that, this point?
I know, I'm with my teachers, and unfortunately, we haven't been able to start it yet because we had. We had, we've had some teachers out because of other round of COVID, and we had stuff, but my fourth grade and fifth grade teachers on Fridays are going to break students out as far as math goes, and they're going to start doing some enrichment and some other, you know, several, they're going to break them up, I think into five different groups. We're going to pull some other resources to come in. I'm going to take a group, I've got a, I think Mr. Gould is going to take a group, so that we can work in smaller groups to help move kids forward in that. And then we're going to look at doing that as well with T D. I think moving forward, we've talked about, I know fourth and fifth grade this year, we're maxed out class size, and that's not ideal. So I know we're working towards getting back down to a more ideal class size, which will help, it's just overbearing when you have twenty-four, twenty-five in a classroom. So those are some things that we are working on at Lincoln.
So the class sizes, this year's class sizes don't reflect this, these scores.
Correct.
They would have been last year's class sizes. So we'll be able to see how those, how this year might affect.
Yeah.
Right.
And I'll tell you, another thing that I see in my building that we're going to do is really goal setting, and that's another thing that my teachers have worked, have reached out to their students, better goal setting and what their role is, what do they want to accomplish so that they have a goal and that they have something to work for. And just the conversation that I've had with some of my teachers, it's been really nice to hear their feedback that they're getting from their students and what they're talking about, and then they've even seen it in the classroom with the kids and how they're responding to each other with their specific personal goals. And then just really truly like promoting, I know we don't, you know, want to teach to the test because that's not the goal, but they have to have some, they have to have some goals when it comes to state testing. They have to know that it's important, and they do, but they have to know that it's not a, it's not just a test, like we want to show what you know, and that's it. So really like building it up and making them more excited instead of it just being a test we have to take. And I think that that mindset will also truly help in teaching them how to be in present when they're taking that test, which is such a huge factor in test scores. Those are things that we're working on.
Within that small group, you mentioned small groups, and I love that, I would be proponent of that. We talk about economic disadvantages, some of the goals and benchmarks, is that factored into how we categorize any of that, or how we allocate that?
It's really how we're going to, how they're going to break up, and it's going to be really based on standards. So it really has nothing to do with that, it will affect it, it will have a big impact on it, but it's really going to be per standard, how did they score on our maths test in that one standard? And then they're going to, and so each, every couple of weeks, it may be different kids in different groups, so that it's not just overall, it's pretty specific so that we can really try to make some of those gains. And it really, I mean, we'll really be able to hit some of those kids that don't have any extra help.
And really hit them where they are.
Where they are, exactly, yeah.
How does, how does this, this is a good plan for Lincoln, how does that translate into our other schools? Are we seeing the exact same model that's being, you know, it just doesn't start at Lincoln? It obviously locked on.
Well, I can, something we've had the luxury of doing this year, Coach Chapman is just at my building this year, in the past, he's been a traveling teacher, and so with some of the extra time that he has in my building, not in P E classes, this year, he has done math remediation and helping kids who, and I, we've been doing that since the beginning of the year, so I'm hoping we'll see some progression in their math scores. The title teachers have been really good for the last, I would say at least two years, maybe three, that they have taken that math, math score and reading, and they've been following the kids and looking at from when they first start in kindergarten and kind of following them, are they staying, are these kids who are below grade level, are they staying there the whole time, are they coming up, are they dipping back down? We're trying to find some patterns, is it during those transition years? And so that is something that I have started now, trying to pull math and see if we have the same pattern and use that data with our teachers better.
So third grade is, it's still crucial for reading.
Absolutely.
You take a test, don't you?
Yes, that's where the reading sufficiency comes out.
Right, okay, so how proficient are we? Are we eighty percent proficient in reading at third grade?
We went down this past year, it wasn't, we've done, I don't have the numbers, so it's me.
It's okay, we just, my, it's unfair to target some things without you guys being prepared, so I don't mean to put you on the spot like that, but what I would like to see is maybe come back with some kind of, as you guys have an opportunity to regroup and to organize your plan of attack, to be able to present that to us as we see, what are we going to do about these and where are we going with them? The other thing is, is what can we do to help?
Right.
We are here to provide resources, we are here to provide policy, and we want to. This is not something that's happened overnight, and we, I personally recognize that. However, the time is now.
Absolutely.
So those are the areas, as we, as I see some things that I've noticed from the State Department of Ed, other schools that have been, had the same problems we have, and some of the plans that they put into place to take it to another level. So we don't have to reinvent the wheel, there's lots of things out there to help us, and we might even see our scores go down a little bit more because we really haven't seen the true effects of COVID, I don't think. But again, we've got to see where we are, we've got to provide this to our constituents as to where we're going and how we're going to get there, and then through Mr. Argo, he's to tell us what we can do to help. And I think we're in a great position to assist, better than most school districts, okay? So we're in it together, we own it, it's ours. And so I encourage us to come back together, and like I said, it's not new. So don't feel like that the weight of the world is on your shoulders, but we will, we're going to figure it out, and we're going to take it to another level, okay? And you have a hundred percent support, I know, from this group. So thank you for being so brave to get up here and talk about it, and I look forward to hearing back. Any more questions?
I will say, back to what you said, that attitude, if it's interesting, over our little snow break, I've read a lot of educational things because that's what my life is, and a person was talking about positivity on tests, and the thought was, you've all heard it, she told her test takers to go over and say, I can do this, today's my day. And everybody looked at her, said there had to be something else, and she said, no. I said, before they sit down, before they open that, crack that test open, A C T S A T, she said, I don't care if it's for law, today's the day, today's my day. And she said, every one of them raise their scores. So, sounds simple, but it's something, and I think you're right, I mean, when they come in, they go, oh, today's the test day, we all do that, oh, today, I've got to go, don't do that, I get to go, today's the day. And it's, and we as educators set that mark, right? You know, we know what's on the line, we see it, we know, but we can all continue to grow, so thank you for your comments, James, I'm going to say.
To that, you know, it would be great, we have like our little testing for you guys to come by, you know, when we have our little testing assembly or something.
Oh, well, let us know.
For you guys, I mean, I think that would be fun.
Let us know, if I'm available, I'd be happy, and thank you for the invitation to anybody, you know, I'm always watching kids succeed.
Are we implementing something like this in the middle school as well? Have we targeted?
No, I don't, I don't think it'd be probably fair for me to speak on that, or really anybody to speak on that with Ms. Martini here, but I do think to kind of maybe piggyback off what James said, is we do need to kind of put together some type of plan of what we are doing and maybe be able to update you all at the board meeting, on a site-by-site basis, I think that might be the best thing to do. And that'd give me some time to work with the high school teachers here and get some of their feedback on what they think needs to be done also.
And I think too, when you guys really talk about what we're going to, what we're doing, we'll add into this conversation.
In our strategic plan, we make several points in there about what can change this, and one of them is professional development on content area literacy, and another one is focus of professional development on engagement. And we have done a great deal of work in professional development, but it doesn't always manifest in classroom practices. So, and what that, what we're really talking about is, we talk about that third grade reading test being a big deal, well, that's kind of, we need to really kind of define what teaching reading is. And a lot of people believe that teaching reading is teaching kids to decode the letters and pronounce the words, and there's so much more to it than that. And so we've been doing a book study as an admin team, a book by Chris Tobani called I Read It, But I Don't Get It, that's a refrain we hear from kids a lot. And in that, it's a very practical guide to classroom strategies that will help kids glean information from difficult texts, and that's really at the heart of what we're talking about, it's really at the heart of the work that we're doing if we want to see these scores improve. And it's been, we're into, I've read the book, Mrs. Lovelace has read the book, we're about in the third chapter with everybody on the team, and I think it's been, I think it's been enlightening, and what our plan right now is probably And what our plan right now is probably do the book study with our staff in each building. Now, it's just one thing. And it's not a silver bullet, but it, but it is a start to building common language on those kinds of practices that we know work. The idea that every teacher is a reading teacher and every teacher is a writing teacher is huge. It is the work. That is the work. That we're using our content, our subject area, is, you know, to teach those things or that, that's actually the vehicle. So we still need, we still have a lot of work to do there. And then monitoring that in a way that we reinforce that in classroom practices every day. So there's still a lot of work, obviously, to be done, but that's one thing that we're doing to work in that direction.
I want to kind of piggyback on what Karen said about the positivity. We have Willie Spears coming on the 23rd, and Willie's in a lot of classrooms all over the country. He's going to be in Oklahoma all week that week. He was up here this past weekend after Northwestern stuff. And he, I would encourage us as administrators and the teachers to pick his brain as well while we have him. And what are positive, what are the things we can do to increase positivity? Because he's all about that approach.
And success.
And yes.
And feeling good about where I am as a person, what I can grow. And they go, it's back, everybody's different, you know? Don't compare me to my twin sister because we were different. In fact, if you wanted me to shut me down, compare me to my twin sister. And I said, "Okay, I'm done," you know? So it's all in a strategy, kind of a thought mine. But thank you for your hard work and diligence. We're always changing as human beings, aren't we?
I thought, when I read what some of our other schools were doing with Willie, there was quite a component there for faculty, for the adults in the room. And I noticed we don't have any of that in ours. I know they'll pick up on what he says to the kids. But if I read that, if I read Fairview's correctly, I think most of his, theirs was targeted at their grownups. Because I think as grownups, sometimes we need to boost, if we are boosted, we're boosting.
That's very true.
And we're all weary, and so we need a boost. And so anyway, I didn't...
A big question to ask, is this the best that we can be? And I don't think any of us in there believe that that's the best that we can be. So we have, I think you're right. We need that efficacy to know that we can, we can change this.
Well, I think it's important to note that it didn't happen overnight. It's not my fault.
Right.
Don't, I don't, you know, that's not what we're, you know, it's, it's our fault. And what can we do about it? And I think if everybody would just know that we aren't there going, sure, we're disappointed. And sure, when it's in our newspaper, our community doesn't understand. And so we have to show increments of improvement. And then that builds on encouragement. And then, and the more improvement builds on the more encouragement. I mean, we didn't, you didn't go from 0 and 12 to 25 and 0, you know, those years of winning and winning and winning till you finally got another state championship. And you know what? We're going to get a state championship in the classroom. I believe that. And so we've got the greatest kids, we've got the greatest teachers, we've got the greatest community. Now, what can we do to help you so you look at us and say, "This is the greatest board?" Because that's what we want to be. And it's never, are we ever going to be in a position that we can provide better resources for you? It's just pretty unusual for us to be as financially stable as we are in these times. And we've got a great leadership. Mr. Argo was hired as a change agent, and he's done a great job. And so we've got to support him and make it, make it happen. And so that's my spiritual of the day. I want to help. I'm not, I'm sure on your point, when I point fingers, I've got a whole lot more pointing back at me. So we won't do that. Are you ready to go on?
Yeah, any further questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for the questions and comments.
All right. Items of current business. Discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve an offer of employment to applicant number one. Non-certified, non-certified position for physical year 22.
As a result of some prior resignations with paraprofessionals, we agreed to the board's start of James for a non-certified position for the FY 22 school year. She will be assigned to the middle school and help her students out there looking for her, we part our team.
Okay, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Six two, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve board policy FE. Is that FE or S?
FE.
FE.
If you'll open up that attachment, I just want to walk you through. So we approved this, this policy in December as required prior to January 1 for, because of this student transfer law that took place. And so what happened about two weeks ago, the State Board of Education came in and they provided some new rules. And so, which requires all districts across the state to bring this back to what was approved. So I want to walk you through a couple of changes or additions to that policy that have been made. If you'll look first on the second page where it lists our capacity limitations. Prior, at our approval at the December board meeting, we had 76 as our capacity limitation in preschool, and that's not accurate. We are at 80. And so that was an oversight on my part. And so I'm changing that to 80 to make that right. That's what we've always been at, is at an 80 capacity, student capacity. If you go down through there, you'll look, you'll see another underlined portion that the School Board Association sent us, and this was a change from the previous policy. And if you remember from the previous policy, they didn't outline a particular number of days a district had to notify a parent of approval or denial. Each district could send their own, could set their own days. Well, as you can see, they've come back and they've said it's 30 days. And so in essence, that's really kind of what some of these changes, it clarified where districts were able to use some autonomy to determine some of these things. They've standardized it across the state. With the appeal process, you can see they've added some requirements to the appeal process that weren't previously there. So they really just went back and cleaned this up. I don't see anything that would, I would recommend this not being approved. This has been vetted by our School Board Association. The policies were required by law, and so I would recommend it's approved.
I'd make the motion that we approve the changes in board policy FE as presented.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
6.3, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the selection procedures for construction managers.
As we move forward with our projects, the HVAC and the gym lazy and the others, when we work on cafeteria renovation, want to make sure that we have a standardized set of procedures. And so on the recommendation of our attorney, we have a selection procedure process that, from the intent of what the law has been stated, that we use this. And so I worked with Eric Nielsen, our school attorney, with Rosenstein, FISD, Ringgold, and we came up with this selection procedure for construction manager. It is in essence what we have always used, but they feel like it's important to have what we do in practice in writing. And so I would recommend approval of Agenda Item 6.3, our selection procedures for construction managers.
Mr. Argo, this is a new document, correct?
Yes, it is a new document. And so it's not a document that is a policy. But what it is, is we have a policy on construction management. And in that policy, we come up with procedures. And our attorney feels like it's important that we have a set of procedures that we always use as a board in making these determinations.
And this is what we used on our, on our previous...
Yeah, so what we'll do is we'll get a, we'll form a committee, as we did on our renovation. We will get a request for a proposal from our architect that will send the construction managers. We'll interview them, and then we'll bring the best candidate or candidates to the board.
If we choose not to use a construction manager, at some point, I don't know what that would be, but then this just does not apply.
Correct.
Correct.
At what point does this have to be put out on bid?
So this is not a, this is not a bidding process.
I mean, the selection of a construction manager?
There's not a set timeframe. It's important, you know, we're getting close to that point, we start getting engineering drawings. We want to be able to select a firm that we feel like has some experience, they'll be able to give us some cost estimates. So it kind of works hand in hand with our architect when they get to a certain point with their plans. There's not a set timeframe. There's not a set certain amount of days.
And not a set goal?
Yeah, correct. And so we're probably, within the next week, I'm going to reach back out to Tryark again and kind of find out where we're at. We're probably within a week of asking, you know, we need our request for a proposal so that we can send it out and begin that interview process. So we're getting close to that point.
So those, I'm sorry, I should call the questions I should know, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
But those, some of the information we got a few weeks ago was concerning whether the units go on the building, the roof wasn't structurally sound enough to hold the units on top, so then they would need to go on the, on the ground. At one time, we thought, looked like there was ductwork up there. There definitely is little things for ductwork.
There is ductwork.
Okay.
The engineers do not believe that you can replace the units that are up there because they're only heating units. So to replace those, you would have to put new units that had HVAC and heating in it, which increases the size of each one of those units. As a result of that, you'd have to build more curving on your roof, which is not feasible. And so structurally, they feel like at this point, the best solution is to put those units outside and then use a sop, for lack of a better term, to move that air inside the gym. Now, they're still working on engineering plans. And so that, all that to say, that may change. But that as of last week, one of the snow days, that's where they're at.
Can the units be, can the heat units be on top of air conditioning? What do they call the air conditioning part of the unit? Is that what? I should know, I'm just...
I don't know that, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay.
I can ask them, but I don't know, I don't know.
I just know enough to be dangerous.
Is it, is the roof in a spot where, I don't, because you know the exact day, the exact year it was due, but is it at a point where it's looked at anyway?
Possibility of replacement anyway?
Yeah. Don't know that, have not been told that by any roofing company at this point. And so we went into a maintenance contract, and by all accounts, our old gym had some issues, but our new gym didn't have those same issues, so there wasn't a concern at that point. But I can revisit that. That's a good, good point, good question.
Oh, is that gas heat in there?
Yes.
Seems like a lifetime ago, is it, the gym?
It is the new gym.
But that's tiny, it was the biggest thing ever.
I'll check into that. Those are good questions.
In my new building, the heating unit's on the inside of the building. The air conditioning, whatever they call it, is on the outside. Okay. I didn't know those kind of things existed. That's why I asked that really smart question. Any questions?
Yeah, we have some, we have some of those throughout the district, but you don't see those as often installed, so I don't know.
They're probably not as efficient, I wouldn't think, maybe, but anyway.
Possibility. I'll check into it.
I don't know. All right. Any more due business?
Thank you, thank you.
Do we need to, we need to vote on that? Let's hear the motion before we move on.
We'll do approve item 6.3.
Second. Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Now, do we have any more business? Sure, you have any more business?
No.
I've already answered that once. Sorry. Signing of documents approved by earlier action, and we have a motion to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, how about second?
Oh, second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?